No, we're gonna have a.
Good morning. Yeah, good morning. And welcome to the Port County Commissioners Board Work Session for March 18th, 2020. A way of introduction, I'm John Hutchins, Chair of War, this is where I, yes.
Vice Chair of Time, sir.
And?
Gary Edwards.
Robin.
Robin Gorts.
Ramiro Chavez.
Laupenita Bolmar.
Thomasina Cooper.
And backbone?
Amy Davis.
Amy Davis, there we go. So we're gonna start with COVID-19 response discussion, because this is a hot topic.
Yeah, thank you Commissioners. Shelley Slater is attending other matters, so she'll be here in a, in a, in a five minutes or so. And we have Kurt Harding, the Emergency Management Director. And maybe we can probably have until, wait until Shelley comes to give an update on the latest on this. But I'd like to engage a conversation with you related to county operations. As you know, on Monday, we had a conversation with elected officials. And, and we asked each elected officials in each department to present a plan to send to me by the end of day today. So how a shutting down non-essential county businesses will be accomplished. And.
Sorry, excuse me.
It was like, what's an echo? Yeah.
Maybe you're a doppelganger.
The world cannot handle Trevor Marrows.
Your mother.
Sorry. So, and, and those plans are coming in, I think we, at least from my point of view, I need to understand how that approach could be. But I'm in the position to suggest a two-phase approach to you today. And as you know, this emergency is evolving, and we need to respond and evolve as, as we move along. So my recommendation to you is gonna be the two-phase approach for, for you to consider closing county offices and buildings for the public as soon as feasible, whether we can accomplish that today at noon, or maybe at the beginning of business tomorrow, tomorrow, Thursday. We will continue to operate county employees to provide us the best that we can to the, the services to the, the public. And that is gonna be a little bit of a, an interesting approach. If we close the county offices, we can probably exercise having drop access outside. They will continue to operate, not necessarily on the, on the normal basis, but at least on as much as we can. And that will put us in the position to step two of phase two next week as to how we could implement a non-essential business shutdown that will, that will involve employees at this point. So the, the reason that I'm suggesting this, I think we, we need to be reactive of, of protecting the public first of all, and first step to protect our employees. And I believe avoiding that interaction at this point is the, is the most prudent approach that I can probably bring to your attention. So I will strongly encourage you to consider this proposal. And I'm open for any questions.
I want to make sure I understand the terminology we're using, so I understand the concepts, because essential employee is somebody that's necess, like the most essential services, depending, you know, how to keep them, you know, when we have a COO plan, it's about keeping them functional wherever they are.
Right.
You, because that, you know, you're not thinking about public contact piece, it's just, you know, if it's an earthquake, how do they do their, their work? But with this public contact piece, I just wanna make sure I understand what we're talking about, because if, if you're not essential, but you can just go home and work, why would we shut that down? Why, what we would want, I would think, people who can work, to work, if, if, if there's no risk from public contact work, or having to be in this.
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
Which is kinda, was kinda mucking up my understanding of these different plans and.
Okay, so, and everything is evolving. I had a long conference call with all the county managers and executives across the state yesterday. And I think that's probably, and that is how I start changing my, my suggestion to you. The, the majority are closing their county offices and buildings, closing access to the public. That's first stuff. Staff, county staff continue to operate on the normal circumstances. So they will be, continue to come to the county and start performing the duties. Some may be affected, absolutely. So the telecommuting is also part of this process. So any employee who has a, an option to telecommute, that has been in place for the last two weeks, that is not changing. What I'm talking about phase two is whether we're gonna be putting ourselves in the position to exercise this shutting down non-essential services.
Who can't telecommute?
Yeah, who cannot telecommute. So, because there is gonna be a lot of employees, and that will give us an assessment in the next week or so, for those employees who provide direct service to, to the public, customer services. Whether that is gonna be effective in the next few days in terms of having them come. But I believe that each office and departments can use as many help from the employees to, at least to continue the services to provide to the public. That is, that is my, my two-phase approach that I'm proposing.
I just wanna, and I just wanna make sure that when we say shutting down non-essential service, we're talking about those who can't do it in a safe way from a remote location.
Yeah, and that will be something what I call a phase two.
And when we, and when we talked about that pay bomb, for example, let's say that you're... Who does that apply to the five persons? Is it somebody that's essential but can telecommute, or is essential but has to be here, or is non-essential but can telecommute, or is non-essential in the shutdown?
They, essentially, they, there must be in, in the premises.
On the premises. Okay, that's, those are, that's what I wanted to clarify.
There's, there's a lot of, thank you for the clarification, because I'm sure a lot of employees will have the same question, so I appreciate the questions.
Maybe fits in a different box here and there.
Yeah, I was talking to Josh about his plan yesterday, and I realized that, like, I'm confused of what the significance of essential means versus being, having to be on site, because those are two different parameters.
Because that, and again, because some of the plans that I have received puts, puts me in the perspective of even how we're gonna be managing effectively if we get to the point of shutting down the non-essential. But I think it's, it's imperative for you to consider closing county offices, access to the public. I'm not suggesting that we're gonna stop services. The services will be affected. We will do the best possible job as to how we continue to provide services to the citizens. It's just avoiding that contact.
Got it. Gary?
We already have adequate delays, I feel, from the bureaucratic process in government. And small business is the backbone of our community, of our economic engine, both locally and at the national level. And I see this as even more damaging to local business than, than not, I guess. So I'm gonna propose that we take a vote by this board, that we grant amnesty to any individual businesses that need permits to continue their operation, to keep people employed, keep the economic engine going. Then maybe we could close down some of the courthouse access. But I'm not willing to vote to court, to close down access for citizens out there that are involved in everyday business and further damage the economics of this country. I know Thurston County is only one small piece of it, but I wanna make sure that these people are still going, and I, I believe, I, I don't know the verbiage of what that amnesty would look like exactly, but we would be able to catch up on it on the other end of this situation that we're dealing with. So I'd like to have the discussion in that regard before we take the vote on whether or not we're gonna close up.
Is that the concept of a lockbox then, outside?
Yeah.
For permits, or whatever their, their business is.
That, that is intent, that is intent, they will continue to provide those services. What we're trying to avoid with my suggestion is the public contact.
Okay, and the Thurston Economic Development Council is exceedingly engaged right now with the, the state government and all other economic affiliate folks in the county. And they actually have small business resources opened up, and they have a specific website for assistance for small businesses, which is the backbone of the economy to help them survive and to provide them some type of avenue to get through this as minimally scared as they can. And so I like, I'm on board with any kind of incentive we can offer, but shutting down the door, shutting the doors to the public, in my opinion, is the most unselfish thing we can do, as long as they have access to get work done that's important to them and important to the county. I would encourage people to look up the Thurston Economic Development Council, if you're a business owner, especially a small business owner, and see what they can do for you. They are highly, Michael K, they are highly engaged.
I guess I, I wanna challenge from my position then, that I guess what I'm understanding is I don't have the second from my seatmates to do something to benefit these businesses, to allow them to continue going. Is that right?
Oh, I'm supportive of that.
Well, let's, let's take a vote on it.
But what do you mean?
We would, well, we'd study what an amnesty would look like and see how that could fit and move forward with it at that point. I wanna give these businesses an amnesty. We have a dismal.
Amnesty from what, though?
From needing to come in here, try to go through this nightmare of the permitting process that exists without even having.
So permission.
New-on-virus, if you will.
New, new, new businesses?
No, not new businesses. We got a lot of people out there wanna add a bedroom, they wanna build a house.
As a business?
Yes, it is a business. It's a big part of our business.
Building's a business.
There you go. I wanna keep those people working.
All right.
So I don't hear a second, so I guess it's not gonna go very far.
Well, just, for me, it's, it's a very broad topic, and we only have an hour and a half.
Well, I'm willing to stay here as long as it takes to get this thing fixed.
We have significant other businesses to tend to.
Okay.
But that is a, that's a whole long conversation that involves CPED as well.
We're under emergency situation, and I think we need to fix this economic engine and continue to keep it going. That's what I'm.
Any input?
I think, I've never heard of doing something like that. I think it's very premature. The same thing that you're saying now is, is one of your philosophies that you have all the time.
Yes, I do.
And I think you're taking advantage of a crisis, and we have a lot of things to deal with in the front, and to try to, to try to further your agenda that you are very passionate about and upfront about, but I don't think it's the time or place to be looking at something like that. I mean, I'm not sure what it would involve, but, you know, building codes are for people's safety and health, just like the measures we're taking now. So I'm not, I'm not interested in suspending any necessity to comply with health, safety, environmental codes. If that's what you're suggesting, I'm not really sure what you're suggesting, but that does seem to be in line with what is on our plate necessary for us to address. This, well.
So I'll give you a second for the topic, because I've talked for weeks about some type of an incentive for, for businesses existing, but also for future businesses and for the building, community. However, it is, it's being brought up now as, let's discuss it right now, and we can't do that when we have an act agenda, the time we have.
I want a direction to staff.
I don't want in the conversation, but there's gonna be a, it's gotta be time to vote specifically for that with no other interruptions, if that means no other agenda items.
No, we've set a time this afternoon, if you want. I don't care.
We have a lot, I mean, we have a lot of pieces of process that are in the works through the regular process, that are designed to do exactly what you're describing. We've worked on e-inspection, we're looking at, you know, coming up with flexibility in our loan impact development. We've got process, all the streamlined process grids that Brett has presented to us. I mean, we have a lot of things going, designed, but they go through a process, they get vetted, they get discussed. You know, there's, I, I don't wanna do that, that something like that in, in this type of environment. It's, it's, it's like, it's like the, what is it, the shock doctrine theory, where it's like the theory that, that, you know, policymakers sometimes use crises to exploit questionable policies or implement questionable policies, like that's how we have the Patriot Act after 9/11. We have mass surveillance of our people, and that kind of stuff, it's extreme example, but I don't wanna do something that's not carefully considered just because we're dealing with something else that makes us feel like, oh my gosh, it's emergency, we can suspend all rules, we can suspend all processes. What you're talking about is something that would, that I, I've been open to every suggestion you've made along the lines of streamlining process, making it easier for businesses. And we're working on all of those things, but this is not the context for that type of a policy change, in my view.
So can we set up, can we set up a briefing? We can't do this afternoon. See, I might got, I've got other business to tend to, as we all, the conference call and such. And council, council board, and I've got some rules tomorrow, but can we set up some type of a good hour discussion on this topic, or 90 minutes?
Yeah, there's a.
Josh and Brett and Jennifer?
There is a meeting scheduled tomorrow that I set aside to have this topic been discussed with the COVID-19. I can change that for you to continue this conversation, if that's what.
And that is tomorrow?
Tomorrow at 9 o'clock.
What's today? Wednesday?
No, tomorrow's Thursday at 19.
Oh, 9 o'clock? No, it's not closed, you're, okay.
So I'll change the subject since we're talking about this right now.
Okay, and that's an hour?
Yeah.
Nine to 10, okay. Good, okay. In your favor, but I wanna respond responsibly rather than just react. And I'm not saying reactive, but it's, it's a good conversation that needs to be had. I've been talking about this for a couple of weeks now, incentivizing to keep things going. But it's gotta be thoughtful, well-thought-out, and when to begin, when is it in, what's it entail? There's a, there's a whole host of subjects. Is that okay with you, Commissioner?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. All right, okay, good. Thank you, Ramon. More, though, on, we were talking about closing the public, closing the courthouse to the public and non-essentials and such. The Doobie Brothers, back in 1978, they predicted this, because they sang that song minute by minute, minute by minute, I keep holding on. And this whole thing is just, it changes so rapidly and dynamically. But I want people to realize, when I say people, I mean our employees, that, that they are not forgotten, they're not neglected. They're highly thought of and wanna be protected, their safety. And there are policies in place, they have complicated issues in their lives, either at home or themselves. We're still tending to the non-essential personnel issue after we get all the elected and direct, department directors' plans today as to how it will go about business, but also there's a chain of command within their work unit. And I would just remind our employees, go through your chain of command, if you have specific concerns or issues, please go through your chain of command, and don't expect to come to the commission to get answers, but we're working on this at a higher level. There's policies, procedures, protocols, and a chain of command in place to tend to, for the needs of employees, if that makes sense. Now, where are we going from here?
Well, I present to you a proposal.
Okay, so down, and work tomorrow?
As soon as feasible, but the latest tomorrow morning.
And if we do that?
But let me, let me clarify, just to reiterate my, my proposal. We're not shutting county businesses, we're just closing access to the public to be responsive to this emergency.
Can people get in the lobbies to drop, to use the drop box?
No, we'll probably put drop boxes outside.
Okay.
And those drop boxes then be specific, and these are, I'm asking details now that you may not have, for CPED, for the treasurer, for the assessor, for, for each department.
Yeah, we, we, we need to work through those details. You probably saw the, the assessor already closed, he, his office for public access, and he has a drop box just outside.
Right.
So if we, if we close access to the public, to all county facilities, we'll probably have to close the doors and, and make sure that we participate on this. Josh, I had a conversation with Josh, he will continue to receive any applications. And we will encourage to any of the business committees who members are looking for a permit, to call ahead, and we will meet him outside to process that permit.
Does that impact the courts?
I have in conversations with the courts, they already have a way to, they already exercised two orders. I shared that with you. One, the Superior Court, now District Court on the same. They're going through the process, and I believe, based on, they're waiting for this decision to, if the commissioners would like to close the county offices access to the public, then will, they'll implement, I believe, not having jurors to come. So, but their business is still continuing, I believe.
Their business is continuing, but 8 o'clock tomorrow morning, or noon today, if we shut it down, the Black Robes are gonna give us a thumbs up? Or are they gonna, is that gonna impact them to a degree that there will be some backlash?
I, I don't wanna be disrespectful, but I don't think you, you need a, your decision, a thumbs up from.
Okay.
I believe you're calling, you're telling, you're asking the judges, right?
Right.
I, I differ with that. I really think the judges have control of their courtroom and their court activities. We might think we have control over that building, but I feel the judges are in charge on that particular issue.
Yeah, and we don't get the court down, no?
No, and so I think that discussion needs to be had. I wanna put some things in perspective. We have had, so far this flu season, we've had over 20,000 deaths in this country from the regular flu. We've had 300,000 people that have been hospitalized during this flu season. And I don't know what the numbers are here, and I'm not downplaying the seriousness of what we're dealing with here in today's. And I realize that we need this social distancing and try to do the best we can to address this issue. But I'm not willing to close down the courthouse and inconvenience more and more people and prevent the economic engine from continuing in this county. So.
Well, and I'll just finish up on the topic, I want you to address the court system as well. The, if I inconvenience the public, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna inconvenience the public if we shut the courthouse down. I just received a text from Josh Cummings, the director of CPED, and he says, services will continue, hence the drop box. If we still do this, it might be inconvenient, and I'll live with that. They wanna smack me on the back of the head, okay. But in the interest of public safety and, uh, public health and social policy, I'm willing to do that if services are continuing where we can.
And you're right, Superior Court particularly has a different mandate, and, and they operate in a different circumstances. Similar to when we closed the county for weather-related emergencies. In some instances, they have aligned to the closure, in some instances, they haven't. So I believe, based on your direction they will provide today, if that is the case, they will assess that direction, and they will exercise their, their duty as they see fit.
So just to wrap the court piece, what are we talking about? Are we talking about the clerk's office, like, so the public coming in? I mean, what are we talking about in terms of what are, what your proposal would mean for the court business?
It is, is closing the, the county buildings, access to the public.
So there'd be no court proceedings?
There will be court proceedings, but they would have to determine how they need to do, and the, in the court order, I believe, they submitted yesterday, outlined some of that already.
But that, I mean, that was stripped back on certain types of proceedings, but other types of proceedings were gonna happen somewhat normally, and people would have to get in and out of.
Right, and that's how they, the courts, they need to manage that.
Okay, I don't wanna affect that, because I do agree they, it's a different, it's a different branch of government with.
And, and that's what they, they have, in a direction they would have provided in terms of county closures, they have reacted a little bit different in some instances, and also they have reacting and the same, so.
Who's already closed? Because you said the, you said the assessor, I, I had, I saw an email from the auditor, or something from the auditor's office. You had said something about public health.
Yeah.
Who's, who has not waited for the board to act and has closed to the public?
Well, elected offices, two elected offices have already decided to close that to the public, that would be the auditor and the assessor. I just had a conversation with the treasurer, and, and he, he's, he's waiting as to the result of this conversation. Yesterday, we had to close public health, access to the public in the afternoon, because one employee started showing symptoms of high temperature. And that's what we're gonna start seeing more and more. And it's not just about the, the, the public coming in, also, this is citizens affecting perhaps the public who comes in.
I haven't found anybody, heard of anybody not being impacted by, by this issue, to include the stress levels of everybody internal and external to the county business.
So I, I know that Tom Water is doing things by, like, for building services, they're working by appointment only rather than a drop box or something else, or staying open. And I mentioned that to Josh yesterday, and whether that could be incorporated as a component, if there's a specifically, you know, difficult, you know, building permit issue that needs a face time, can that be done by appointment? I think he said that would not be a problem. So I guess my question is, to what extent are we really impeding the flow of business permitting if we do this, this way? I, if, if everybody can do their work and have, and submit electronically, which we're trying to encourage anyway, and have face-to-faces by appointment if it's necessary, I'm not sure what the real, I mean, I'm being a little bit, I mean, obviously, there's gonna be a little bit of a, of a gumming up, and, you know, because we're changing things. But can, it sounds to me like business can proceed kind of as usual.
Yeah, and that's what probably Josh has already provided some information as to how he's planning to implement measures to continue the services. To continue the services, and that's really what. To continue the services, and that's really what, um, uh, in each office, for instance, public works. Although closing to the public, if that is the case, if that is the direction of the board, they will continue to provide the services on their own means. Uh, to the citizens, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we were, if we were talking about a total shutdown of the CPED department, then I think, you know, the, then.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting.
Commissioner Edwards, his proposal would have a little more.
I'm not suggesting that.
Too weak, but that's not what we're talking about.
I'm not suggesting that, and the, and the, the shutdown on non-essential services could be explored next week depending how the circumstances evolve. That's not my proposal today for you.
So, though, here's just my, my stance on this, we can put this piece down, be done with it. Uh, if, and I'm not shutting down, but my position is, if, it's gonna be major in the back, closing the doors, but as long as business, uh, at the county continues on, then, uh, even though it can be inconvenient, I suggest in two and a half hours, we lock the doors to the public. That's new.
Uh, that, that, that will be good, um, if that is the direction of the board, as soon as feasible, but give us some.
Without.
But give us some time to work through logistics, just to make sure the, the, um, the business are, is not as interrupted as, if, if that is the case.
Disrupted, admittedly, go ahead.
Well, we've got a democratic process, but, you know, I oppose it, but we'll see where it goes.
Do you want to shut down at all? Or you're looking at tomorrow instead of today, or not?
Oh, I think we need more information. I'm, I'm not interested in closing the doors to the public right now. It's already difficult enough to do business here in the courthouse. There's tax issues, there's different kind of assessments and, and, uh, different act, activities that take place here. To put a blanket closure in, I just don't feel it's necessary at this point.
And will those services continue, I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I think it's not necessary, just point out everywhere you. Can I support, uh, the, I, I, I would just leave it to your discretion, but I support your proposal. I mean, to your discretion in terms of the timing this afternoon or?
Okay. Do you have what you need?
Yeah, thank you.
As a policy, policy of, uh, public health and social services?
One more clarification, if I may. We need to put an end date of this closure, because I'm not suggesting for you to close indefinitely, no.
Okay.
Uh, my suggestion will be, um, on a two-week period.
With the eighteen now?
That will be until Thursday, April second. Uh, Friday, April third.
Friday, April third, that's two weeks?
Yeah, a little over two weeks. It's fourteen days in terms of that survey and the quarantine option.
Then will you extend it or rescind it?
And then, uh, open, uh, on April Monday, April sixth, or before, when, whenever you see appropriate, if you'd like to extend it or not.
Are we gonna have any possibility for public input on any of this issue that we're dealing on? I mean, normally at, at commission meetings, we have our, our public input. I realize it's not on yet, but at some point, I mean, if we're gonna close up for two weeks or something, what, the public gets absolutely no say on this, I tell you.
They have plenty to say, they've already had plenty to say. My phone's been lighting up, my email.
Me too.
And I'm ready to respond and then we take the hit, rather than let's have a process and open them public hearings and then how they can publicly hear if we can't limit, we have to limit the number of people coming in. I think logistically that way. Uh, and that's just take more time for the virus to even get more on top of the curve, rather than try to stifle this damn thing.
And just, you know, since sometimes we, when we do take public input, we, you know, we get a report, oh, there were thirty-seven comments for and two comments against, whatever. I can tell you that one hundred percent of the input I've gotten is, please shut down the public-facing comment. I haven't gotten a single comment from anyone that says, please keep public, uh, counters of the county open. I, you know, I'm not to say that there aren't people out there that feel that way, but in terms of the input I've gotten from the public and other county staff, that's what I've heard.
No, and people might say, I want to have a say, but I'm not coming in. I'm not to count the public input, not at all, and as I said, the last month I've been getting, it's, it's been, uh, dramatically increasing the input. Okay, do you have what you need?
Yeah, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Now, we're moving on with an update, uh, on this one, Charlie.
Yep.
Please come on up. Together, but separately.
We're not gonna touch the microphone this time.
No.
Thank you, important safety tip.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Director of Public Health and Social Services.
Good morning, Kurt Harden, Director of Emergency Services.
So I will start by giving you the situation report from this morning regarding cases statewide and in Thurston County. So, um, as of, um, this was as of yesterday. This is yesterday's data that I received this morning at seven AM. Um, Julyan Clark, Columbia Grant, Grace Harbor, Island, Jefferson, King, Kitas, Kititas, Clickitah, Lewis, Lincoln, Pierce, Skajitz, Knomis, Papan, Thurston, Wacama, Yakama, all have positive cases. So that has increased a lot. Thurston County remains at five cases at this time, zero deaths. Um, statewide cases are one thousand and twelve cases with fifty-two deaths. Uh, we continue to be extremely concerned about, about this rapid increase in COVID-nineteen and especially the impact on our healthcare system as, um, was discussed at yesterday's meeting. We're receiving daily reports and information on critical shortages of, um, personal protective equipment for our first responders and healthcare workers. Right now, um, services are being so challenged to the point that there are hospitals in nearby counties that are planning to close. Um, the, there has been a recommendation made to the governor and we expect to be hearing something soon regarding non-urgent medical services um, from, uh, providers such as dental providers, veterinarians, so that their PPE supplies can be reallocated to support, uh, to support our healthcare system. Um, there are testing shortages, there's only four days supply of testing, um, capabilities that, um, we know of, uh, right now. That's all I have for now. We're very, we're very concerned with, um, the new information that we're getting every hour. I had a statewide call, um, with, um, Department of Health and all the directors and health officers in the state again. Um, every, um, every single county, um, and local health jurisdiction i- is in crisis. We're, we're struggling, um, we're struggling to respond to this, um, but we're doing it. And, and we're working with our partners really well, we're doing the best we can under the circumstances. We have amazing staff that are working so many hours on this. Um, and we're trying to get information out to the public as quick as we can and respond to all the information that, um, information that, um, we are getting moment by moment.
Okay, give me.
Shelley, you made a comment about hospitals closing. Could you clarify what you're talking about or what you're referring to there?
Yes, so, um, as hospitals are running out of supplies, um, such as that personal protective equipment, um, it prevents them from being able to provide safe healthcare services. Um, there's, there's not enough. Um, our healthcare, um, our healthcare system is also, um, um, enacting, um, alternate standards of care, which mean that when there is not enough of a certain resource, they have to prioritize the allocation of resources to those that are in the greatest need. And at this point, hospitals are shifting their focus from individual patient care to what is best for the greater good, because there is not enough to serve the needs of regular, everyday patients anymore. So, for example, um, if a hospital only has X number of ventilators, they have to have, um, policies in place to decide who is most likely to benefit from that ventilator essentially survive. They're making very critical, tough decisions. The, the supply chains cannot support our, um, healthcare system continuing to operate in the way that it is, and that includes Thurston County. This is the utmost of seriousness. There's not, and there's just not supply out there. It's not like there's more somewhere and we're just not able to get it.
We're waiting, we're still waiting for state, uh, help to weigh in and sort of give a direction for the hospitals.
We are.
The non-emergent, but about urgent procedures.
We are still waiting for that.
Yes, they, um, my understanding is that, um, we should be hears, we should be hearing something very soon from the governor's office providing direction to our healthcare system so that, um, they can, they can free up some of, um, some other PPE resources to keep, um, our urgent emergency, um, services going.
When you say very soon, like today?
I do not know that for sure. Um, I do not know that for sure. I know those, I know that, um, there have been people working, um, working through the night on coming up with plans.
I, I will tell you that, uh, I've raised, this issue was raised last week, early last week, so it's been over a week now, um, that Thurston County requested that action be taken because of the non, uh, non-urgent medical procedures and, um, I will tell you now that I know of a number, several, uh, hospitals who continued their, uh, non-urgent elective, uh, medical procedures. And now the only reason they're stopping now is because they're running out of PPE. And had that been implemented last week, we would have a better conservation process in place. And my concern is every day that we have a delay. It's still, it's still is being utilized and expended. Dentists' offices, uh, veterinarians, I mean, all, there's a whole host of areas where we could be conserving PPE and it's just not happening, uh, because it's voluntary right now. And, um, and I'm not sure everybody's getting the word, number one. It's not that people, our organizations or, uh, healthcare facilities are not wanting to cooperate. They may not be getting the word, or they may be on a different area of the state where the virus is slowly getting over there, but once it gets there, uh, there's gonna be challenges. So, um, I, I've, as Director Slaughter knows, I've been very vocal about this on our calls with state leadership. And it's not been ringing, um, you know, they're, they're still saying we're discussing it.
But certainly Thurston isn't the only county asking for it.
No, oh, no, no, no. I, I, I will tell you, there is a large urban hospital that was, and I can't name it, because I'm not authorized to name it, that was reported this morning on the call to state leaders will shut down in five days. The CEO of that hospital said they will shut down in five days because they don't, they lack that personal protective equipment.
And that impacts hundreds of thousands of people.
Yeah, it's, it's about a three hundred fifty thousand population area that that hospital impacts.
Kurt, you made mention Thurston County requested was part of your, and I, I'm curious about who requested and what was that request?
She, uh, what, you mean regarding this, uh, non-urgent medical?
I don't, you, you said Thurston County requested that.
I, I was on call with state leadership last week with Department of Health, uh, Incident Management Team and with State Emergency Management. I requested that they, uh, put out a directive to, uh, stop non-urgent medical procedures, uh, last week, and that was, uh, I want, I can look it up, I think it was Tuesday of last week. And, and they, at that point, they said they were gonna look at it, and so they've been looking at it. And then on Friday afternoon, we were on a call with the governor's deputy chief of staff, and we brought the issue up again Friday afternoon, and it's, it's still being looked at, and it's not been acted upon, and that's, that's our concern is, is that um, a week to just look at something, and I realized that you have to go through the lawyers, and I realize there's a process, but at some point we, we have to get action because the PPE is getting expended. And, and I will give you an example. Our top priority right now in Thurston County is probably St. Pete's Hospital. They are very challenged, St. Pete's.
Yeah, but is what again?
Is our top priority for PPE in Thurston County is St. Pete's Hospital. They're challenged with PPE and usage of PPE. Um, we've talked with Capital Medical Center. Capital Medical Center currently is, is, I'm gonna use the word okay. Okay means a week in my mind. Um, with their PPE stockpiles, but we have some significant challenges here. I will tell you that, uh, we've got some release, uh, additional, uh, uh, PPE from the national stockpile is coming into Washington State. It's a drop in the bucket. We will get additional PPE to Thurston County, but they cannot even for tier-one requirements. Tier-one is those counties with confirmed COVID-nineteen cases. They can't even, can't even begin to fulfill even close to what we need down in all the counties that have confirmed cases, let alone the counties that don't have confirmed cases. So this is a critical issue, and honestly, I would not be bringing it to your attention the way I have if I hadn't feel frustrated that I'm not getting very far in, in my concerns with the state.
Are you communicating with, uh, McCord, uh, Lewis up here as far as with the military, our military assets here locally? Or the guard or anything over at Murray area?
We, we asked that question, I think Director Slaughter was on the call this morning when we talked about that. Um, Joint Base, uh, Lewis McCord is focusing on, um, the active duty population there and to maintain that. We don't have access to their healthcare facilities or their resources. They are, the Department of Defense is focused only on their active force. The National Guard and reserve components, honestly, we can't tap into them because if we tap into the National Guard and Army Reserve, or, uh, Reserve components, those are the same people who are working in our hospitals, and so if we activate a, a, uh, military reserve hospital, we just pull our staff out of whatever community that they are, are based in, and that leaves that community short suddenly for healthcare workers. So, um, it's a very, it's a very challenging situation, um, at this point.
There's lots of discussions, um, knowing that we don't have enough hospital beds even, much less the supply to treat all the patients and that, um, currently need it and that we expect are going to need it very soon. Um, so there's lots of talks about, um, and plans in place to, um, set up, um, field-type hospitals, remote hospitals, um, looking at other types of facilities and seeing if they can be turned into medical facilities or hospitals. Um, quarantine isolation sites, we talked a lot about that. We know we don't have enough, um, with only eight at Maple Lane. Um, but the problem is still, we're going to need the workforce and we're going to need the sup, the PPE supplies to be able to do it. So part of it is people get so far down the road to a certain plan and then it's like we don't have the, the supply resources.
So, talking about St. Pete's, for, as an example, you said they're kind of at a critical.
They're, they are a critical, they're, they are rubbing here, they, they're, they shut down all non, uh, urgent medical procedures. They, they are cross-leveling PPE within their, uh, hospital system. Uh, and we, they are still our number one priority because we need to get them that PPE. And when we talk about, uh, suddenly, we're gonna start into alternative levels of care, which means if you run out of PPE, maybe you don't have a mask and you walk in. It's, it's for the healthcare provider, but it's also for the patient, because there is a, when they're seeing the patients, they could be bringing in a, a, uh, uh, something that will uphold or something that could impact that patient. So in other words, it's for the patient's safety as well as for the healthcare worker's safety.
And my question, yeah, okay, so thanks. And my question is, if, if there's five confirmed cases in Thurston County, like, what is it at this point that's, I know we're preparing for this, you know, surge, and we're trying to flatten that out, but what is it today that's clogging up St. Pete's capacity? Have they sent PPE to other places to help them? Or who's, are there people just flooding Pete, St. Peters that are worried that, that maybe they think they need to be tested, or who's clogging it up today? Because we haven't really gotten to the surge yet.
It's, it's the patients that are currently in St. Pete's, where they, they're still using PPE, in other words, they still gotta use a mask and, uh, they're still gotta use the gloves.
Or they wouldn't have otherwise before?
No, they would have, it's just that this is their typical burn rate. So in other words, they, every day, they have a, 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 a cold or burn rate. They use PPE on a daily basis, and they've done conservation measures to stretch that out, but they don't have, uh, most locations don't have large, um, stocks of PPE, and so their.
They're anticipating not getting replenished.
Yeah, and well, and they're not getting replenished. It's not in the, the, uh, supply chain, because typically they get, uh, weekly replenishment under normal situations.
They're normal, actually, I, I follow.
The, the supply chain's been disrupted and they cannot get their resupply, they, they're totally used to.
Go ahead.
And I will also just add to that, that, um, one of the best, um, because we know we don't have enough, um, testing capacity in our community that is occurring, and that's not really our best, you know, our best measure of what's happening with the, with the rate of this disease, we can look at, um, not only the ED utilization rates, um, but also the hospitalization rates and for what they're being hospitalized for. So the, um, so the increase in hospitalizations and the use of, um, beds for COVID-like illnesses, COVID-like, because we got, haven't been able to confirm yet whether these are positive cases or not, um, has dramatically increased, and so that is using up additional beds. Typically, the critical care beds, um, they're virtually always, always at full capacity, so there's no room for additional capacity, so then that, so that then, you know, it's a trickle, it's essentially a trickle effect. So there's no room for additional capacity. So then that so that then, you know, it's a trickle, it's essentially a trickle effect that that happens.
Okay, thank you. My second question was about the quarantine site. Because in every conversation over the last two weeks, it feels like this floats by, like, oh, yeah, we have to deal with, but I don't know what, where do we stand on? I mean, what how soon are we gonna need the fairgrounds or the camp Schlechter in Tumwater or whatever? And where is like, I I just haven't heard, like, what need do we need to authorize something? Do we need to commit resources to get beds to the fairground? Like, what needs to happen so that that's ready to go? Since we know we're gonna need that capacity. I have a discussion about this.
Could I follow up on that uh just for a minute and maybe because this is new information? I got contacted by um the management over Comfort Inn in Tumwater. They've got over a hundred beds over there and they, you know, people aren't traveling much right now. Now, they've offered these beds uh should we need them. So I'll give you the information. I don't know how that'll fit in to what Commissioner Menter is talking about. But I think if we're gonna make a plan, we do have to look at resources. I'm sure we need to look at the public's resources while we're doing this.
Um related to that, I received a phone call from the uh executive director of the Port of Olympia yesterday. And um and I didn't know the same facilities, but they uh they uh the port leases properties for two hotels in Tumwater, maybe the same. And uh and she offered um that in fact, if we need additional uh beds, uh I believe they help within the lease to make those beds available. So maybe along the same lines as you're saying, so perfect.
I just wanna.
You have that information already?
Um I didn't have that specific information, so thank you very much. Um that is one of the strategies in the plan that um Keely Marinow, our homeless response um coordinator, shared with you yesterday. Um that's one of the strategies and one of the things that um our shelter providers are exploring and in some cases utilizing already. So that is on the on the radar of looking at um what kind of businesses are now vacant or are in need of um are in need of some economic support as well and trying to find a way in which we can do that. And so that a million dollars that we received, um ineligible use of that funding would be, for example, to pay for hotel to pay for hotel rooms if that was needed. So we're we're looking at uh lots of lots of different options. Um.
I'll give back to his question, another guy's question, that is, what plans need to be put in place? What do we need to do to get this moving in authorization, any type of stuff that'll drag its feet at this level? We want to move it forward.
You will answer that.
I'm guessing it'll be a real.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I expect this surge anytime, but you know, because I don't wanna be critical. I don't want there to be a cop flat footed when we see it coming.
Yeah.
There's no doubt about it.
So um so as part of that is if there's planning going on and and there's planning in the state, there's planning at the our local level here, we're already talking about public health thing. Uh the E C C, we have uh some planning folks in there. We'll take this to them, because I wasn't aware of this. One of the things we have to make sure we look at is you have to have the capacity for uh healthcare workers there for separation of the individuals, for feeding. Or I mean, there's a whole host of things that we're looking at, but we'll take this and take a look at all that. Um but at the same time, I don't believe we need any additional authorization. The emergency proclamation that the board issued and signed authorizes both of us to execute these types of contracts. However, we um will not do it in a vacuum. We will make sure we talk with the county manager and have some oversight in that regard. So that anything we're doing, um it it we have uh it it meets the uh your appropriate use level for what the conditions that we're in. Uh I will tell you, we've already started exercising, um I've already got um twenty additional cardiac monitors that'll be here Friday at no cost to the county for Medic One. And that what we're doing is we're assembling equipment and other uh cap- uh capabilities in case our transportation, uh our medical transportation requirements spike, which we anticipate may happen. So we're already working these issues and we're already working these plans. I will tell you that the the other outside of personnel and PPE, the biggest issue we have equipment-wise is ventilators. Um and I will tell you, all across the medical community, ventilators are a critical shortage. Uh I've got staff working on that and I and um there may be uh uh something that we have in the works. Um but we're we it's a it's I I'd give anything right now less than a twenty-five percent chance because of the supply chain disruption. But we're working these issues. But we don't I don't think we need additional authorization from the board unless the county manager tell tells me otherwise. But we will also keep him informed to make sure you're stayed informed of what's taking place. Because I do know at the end of all this, someone's gonna be writing a check. And I wanna make sure we do due diligence to document that and justify why we're doing that.
And it's because of Commissioner Edwards, all of us, we understand the process is so long and we're late. Ahead of the games, we're not caught unaware as the last minute. We want to be uh proactive in getting this stuff done for you.
I would say we are actively working on that and some as you can imagine, um some of these plans um are very complex. Take time and even on the, you know, a huge federal level, it it takes a lot of time. Um even in the military, it's taking it's taking time to get some of this stuff done. And what we frankly need the most from you is your support to buy us more time. And we need more time to flatten this curve and keep people out of our hospitals. And the best way that we can do that is to keep people as home as much as possible, so we do not spread this further. That would be, I think, the most impactful thing that the board can do is to support us in those efforts of keeping everybody away from other people as much as possible.
Yeah, we have you have us on board with that. We want to protect people.
And I was gonna add all the Commissioner Menter's question earlier about how would staff look at, you know, essential versus working at home versus uh other areas? I have staff in Medic One as an example, not all are essential, none need be physically here in the workplace. So I have staff who can go home, telecommute and still get their job done. And I have other staff who their whole their role go their role is uh car- uh cardiac CPR training for the public. Well, we're not doing that right now. Um they are working on other things in the office because we have training, supplies, equipment, whatever. But they cannot telecommute and do that from home, so they would have to be going home in that admin leave capacity. So so I so I'm identifying my my plan, we'll be into the county manager today, but I've identified those staff. But on the emergency management side, I need everybody because they're all in need, just like the public health needs a lot of presence there and can't be done from home. So there we're we're working those things, but that's an example of where I can say, I can't train the public on CPR really good because we know there's a direct correlation between uh vice standard CPR during cardiac arrest and also uh survival rates. But unfortunately, we can't do that in today's uh world. And then on the Commissioner Edwards, the Small Business Administration has declared a economic injury disaster across Washington State. Uh that information was uh given this morning to Janica. And so there will be additional resources coming out to small businesses to answer your question as well. I don't know what it looks like right now because honestly, it's going so fast that I can't keep up with it. That's why Janica is here, because she does a great job. But I'm just letting you know that we they are moving forward and there is, they are looking out there for the small businesses as well.
And so so I'll say it on your behalf. We appreciate that that there's that recovery type effort, but we want to minimize any further people having to have to depend on that.
Right.
Any final questions? Because uh we're breaking six minutes for a White House.
Just related to that, eleven thirty, I have a a phone conversation with Representative Heck, Danny Heck. And we're gonna talk about specifically what um Kurt um was mentioning, so.
What time?
Eleven thirty. And um and I had been working with uh Janica and Janica has re- reached out to the A D C and the chambers just to give me some talking points as to what is it that we need from the federal government. So I will keep you posted.
We'll be at the White House?
Ten o'clock.
At ten o'clock. And I want to get a break in for staff whenever. Any final questions for Kurt or shall I?
Well, I I would just like to pass this bit of information on too. And I don't know, maybe you already got this. Had a citizen, uh Jake Cusney, apparently works in the medical equipment field. Uh he has, I have nothing to sell. He says he's not trying to sell anything, so take that out of the equation. Uh he feels that uh kidney dialysis machines could be adjusted very quickly uh to oxygenate oxygenate blood because he knows that a lot of these folks uh die from lack of oxygen once their lungs become full. And that uh I I don't know, Doctor Yu has had a chance to at least take a look at this because I don't wanna uh disregard any citizen's suggestion that could be beneficial. I know nothing about this, but uh he said he's communicating with others, so I don't know what that means.
Do you forward that to Diana you?
Uh yeah, that's I'm wondering if that you's got it.
And if I can.
Emailing for the email on, I think that email.
Ramiro shared that, Ramiro shared that with me and Doctor Yu has not had the opportunity to look at that um specific request yet. Um but I have a meeting uh here with her shortly to talk about multiple things. And so I will share that um specific information with her. But also, um I know that there is a lot of research right now happening in Washington State is the center of the research. And they're looking um at all kinds of treatments and things. And so.
I need to log in.
Okay, maybe you just pass that on.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Any final thought? We gotta shut down and adjourn.
No, you you can continue on, which is it's a conference call, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Any final thoughts or questions? Thank you.
That is so annoying, this volume.
Good work.
Thank you.
We're gonna take up a desk. You need a break. Break, 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 break.
Yeah, I think there's not enough.
Uh minutes dated Tuesday, March ten, twenty twenty.
You have reached a non-working number.
Oh my god.
Two wrongs.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve board to county commissioner meeting minutes dated Tuesday, March ten, twenty twenty.
Second.
The second to approve the Tuesday, March ten, twenty twenty minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Financial service vouchers?
I move to approve the voucher list for the week of March sixteen, twenty twenty.
Second.
We move the second to approve the financial services vouchers.
Welcome to A P and P's teleconference service.
All in favor, say aye.
Please enter your access code, followed by the pound sign.
And project respect this uh agreement.
Your access code was not recognized. Please re-enter your access code, followed by the pound sign. Your access code was not recognized. Please re-enter your access code, followed by the pound sign.
The efficiencies of government.
I I it's not.
Let's hold that.
Do you remember the side of future?
Yes, that's one uh.
Please enter your attendee ID, followed by the pound sign.
We still have we still have time to process that. If you might hold in that.
Please press pound.
Because I'm I'm concerned because you there is not enough audio for your decisions and public needs to understand what you what you are proving.
Oh, okay. We'll wait.
So let please pause on that.
We just hit pause.
Okay.
Think there's frustration level going on anywhere?
There are five hundred eighty-six participants on the call, including you. You are joining your conference as a participant. For a menu of available commands, press star pound. Your connection is now in listen-only mode.
This will be good for the public to hear as well.
This is from the federal government?
The White House. I.
It's a world that your hands can simply choose.
No comments.
Real soothing, soothing.
Yeah, I'll go with you. In fact, I'm just yeah. Please stand by.
There's almost a ten, so it should be starting soon.
Is this Homeland Security or the uh?
It it is um it is the the White House.
The White House itself.
You guys hear, remember how you asked me if they'd hired a new director at um senior services? They did. It was the the gentleman. And there were there were two females and a male.
Okay.
It was the male that got hired, the guy who's, actually, he was the one I made comments about. He was my favorite.
Out there, not that the others weren't good, but.
Yeah, I've.
He seemed raised to.
Yeah, there were two I liked better than a third, and he was one of the two. I think he was actually my second choice, but he was one of the two I thought was above.
Right up there. But I remember which one. But good, good.
He started what, last week?
So his first start was Monday.
So they closed up, but he's trying to get meals to wheels going and all that stuff.
Yeah.
They've got.
And it's all still live.
It's fine. They they are working actively with uh local service groups and churches to make sure that they're getting food out of the meals, seven meals, seven meals, seven days worth of meals at a time and the minds caught it after so.
We have uh Chris Wells coming in, uh and I think Mindy Rule coming in.
Tomorrow at ten.
Thursday and tomorrow morning at ten to give us more update on the answered questions on that, on that issue we're talking about. Yeah, now one of the big things they're they're pushing is uh is food services uh and food bank. Not exclusive of that.
I've heard reaching out to our schools, are we still, are you?
Are you here? We're still live, we're still taping.
We're talking.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um some school uh districts up in north of us are having some challenges getting food deliveries to their school districts for the lunch programs for the kids. We're reaching out to, we don't believe that's the situation in Thurston, but if you hear about it, we're already reaching out to our schools here just to make sure that they.
We are.
Okay, yes, we're we're on top of that here in Thurston, but if you hear about it, yes, it is it's a concern um north of us. And I say north, it's either north of the school or river. It could be Pierce Kings, the Homish, you know.
So Kurt, is that the the schools can't get delivery or they can't get get out from?
Can't get delivery.
They can't get delivery. And so that's a flaw in the delivery chain, if you will.
Well, the supply chain is really disrupted right now. And so for an example, us, I think seventy percent of our commerce moves through trucks. If you have truckers who are not able to drive, as an example, uh either through illness or whatever, I mean, that may create a shortage. I don't know exactly where the bottleneck is, but there's just some challenges.
So markets are still open?
Yes.
And I went down to the eleven seafood market yesterday. They were going on and happy to be open, and so was I. Because fresh fish is always good too. Uh yeah, Ramiro?
Maybe uh uh till we wait this call to materialize, um I.
I can probably give you.
Turn that music down all the way.
I I I there's loads I can get. Um.
You give you apologize.
Sorry, I apologize.
Federal government music because I hear on every conference.
So I will try to speak louder.
Thank you.
Yesterday, I participated in a conference call with the all the uh uh county managers and county executives across the state. And that was a a uh conference call um hosted by WAC. And uh it was well, um you know, took us really almost three hours just to go through that. It was just going county by county as to what we are have done. And uh I can probably attest to the fact that a couple of counties highlighted the supply chain issue related to school lunches. And particularly those on rural areas, they had start seeing those issues. So this uh start confirming that perhaps we have an issue on the supply chain. Uh I can probably tell you that um close to ninety-five percent of the counties have exercised uh uh passed emergency resolutions. I'll say probably eighty percent of those counties have reduced the services and have closed the county offices, similar to what you uh the majority of the board provided to me this morning. And uh in all of those counties are not in the position yet to shut down essential services. And um but they already have plans as we're developing plans if we get to that point. And all of those counties are doing providing um measures as to how they continue to provide services based on on those measures. So um if that is a sense of relief for you, uh Thurston County is not alone across the state. So and and some of the issues, um also homelessness was a big issue as to how we um can, everybody can access shelter, emergency shelters, and you heard that discussion uh this morning. Everybody's talking about the financial impact to uh i- small businesses. And everybody's talking as to how we can probably help as government to help. Is is the immediate need is how those businesses can bridge over this emergency. Because uh as we discussed yesterday um here and also with um the other counties, uh the I'm gonna move so my voice doesn't muffle. Uh, the, I'm gonna move, so my voice doesn't, it's my fault. They only, on some of those businesses, they only have a twenty-seven day uh uh.
Reserve, reserve.
Reserve fund, they can overcome, and that's an average.
That's just.
That's an average, some maybe less, some maybe more.
Have less.
Yeah, so in in those, they don't have that, are the most in need to do something. And we discussed this regional uh partnership yesterday, and that that will be the key of my conversation with um Representative Heck today at eleven thirty as to how we need help from the federal government. There is a lot of movement uh in terms of, I believe you probably saw the news, the Congress is planning to pass some uh some measures. Hopefully, uh they move forward on the Senate, I believe the president is is uh willing to support that as well. Also, the president has already submitted the economic package, I believe, and the the number is just unbelievable, it's uh close to a trillion dollars. But I don't know how that is, some of that may be. So, I stopped.
So we can, you can close the video, we voted to minimize background noise. Thank you very much, operator, and thank you.